Good evening, everyone. My name is Rich Merrill. And once again, it's that time of year again here in Southbridge. Every year, we go through this. We get new candidates who want to come forward and serve the town of Southbridge. And I'll tell you, when you look at some of the other towns surrounding Southbridge area, they're having a tough time getting people to serve on some of the committees out there. We have the opposite problem. We've got eight people here tonight that want to run for town council, a job that is tremendously... Well, they're not actually... I don't know why anybody would want to run for council, to tell you the truth. Because they don't get paid. They don't get glorified calls in the middle of the night thanking them for what the job that they're doing. Instead, they're here to solve problems. And Southbridge has a couple of problems. Anytime you drive down the roads with the school system, everything that we're going to be talking about tonight is a concern to anyone that lives in this town. Myself, I'm just a citizen here in Southbridge, and I think it's a good idea to do this type of thing once a year. And we actually have a place where we can see all the candidates, hear them speak, make sure they can complete a complete sentence, make sure that they can actually put a thought out there, and make sure we know what they sound like, what they look like, and what they stand for. We've got eight candidates for three seats tonight, and it's not really going to be a debate. It's more a town council forum. Hard to do a debate when you've got eight people that all want to talk all at once. We call it a town council forum. They're going to... We're going to ask a question, and they're going to answer the questions. And I thank them for what they're doing right now. And whoever does get elected has quite a job to do. And fortunately, there's eight people that want to have one of the three jobs. Going to introduce you to the candidates, but first, I wanted to thank the people from the Southbridge Cable System. Charlie Diaz and Jim Cosgrove have been wonderful to us. I'm part of the Town Council Forum Committee. And they've been wonderful helping us set this up and also giving us this broadcast time. Jim Cosgrove on camera and Charlie Diaz back there running the controls. And I've actually got some controls here, too. That's why the computer's up here on the podium today, because I'll be able to step you through some of the questions. Maureen Doyle and Gus Steve and myself, Rich Merrill, have all been part of this committee. And we've got a lot of questions to ask. These questions came from some came from former councilors, some came from people on the school committee, some came from just citizens who either gave us a call or said, hey, why don't you ask this question or that question? We're going to get to them first. First, I want to introduce the candidates. We've got eight of them, as I told you. And we're going to start left to right, and they will introduce themselves a little bit later, but at least you'll get a look at them. Kevin Buckston on the far left, right there. George Chenier would be right next to him. Maria Torres. And then there's Andrew Murch. Jaclyn Ryan, one of the incumbents here. Steve Kelly. Ariel Ortiz. And the second incumbent would be Joseph Dow. Those are the eight candidates. Couple of rules that we just want to keep in mind here right now. We sent these rules to the... Or we sent the format to the candidates earlier this week, so they're aware of them. We just want you at home to be aware of them as well. First of all, we're going to start with the question. We're going to pick a name out of the hat. The first person that gets that question will take about two minutes to answer that question, up to two minutes, no longer than two minutes. Then we'll start the question to the person to that person's left, and we'll ask each one of the candidates to answer the same question or give a response, and they'll have one minute to do so. Then we'll go from there to the next question. Each candidate will have a chance to answer each one of the questions and be the first one to do so. Again, two minutes for the first person, one minute for the next. Here's the way we're going to keep track of this. You might want to take a shot of the lights that we have there, the very sophisticated time system that we have sitting right there on the table. Three lights. And why don't you turn one of them on? If it's in green, that's time for the candidates to actually start speaking. The candidates have full view of the lights, too. When the light shows up yellow, that means you got about 15 seconds to finish your answer. And if the light comes up red, you stop talking. And we'll make sure that they do so, too, because we're not going to have any filibusters here. And we will interrupt the candidates, but nicely, for about two or three seconds. And beyond that, well, we will know that the candidates have finished speaking, because they will stop speaking at the red light. There are no gotcha-type questions here. We're not going to ask you what the price of bread is at Big Bunny or what the gallon of milk costs. We save those important questions for presidential debates. Here, this is the town council. And we're going to pull the name of the hat and start with question number one. I will actually bring the question up on the screen so you people at home can see it and also the candidates can see the questions. I'm not sure if you can read them from there, but you'll hear me read the questions to you, and we'll go from there. Let's start with the question number one, and we're going back a little bit to 19... What, 1979? Take you back to 1979. I don't know how many of you people were here. When Southbridge was...
Yeah, we're skipping opening statements.
Yes. Before we start the questions, and I appreciate that, and I apologize for that. Opening statements, you have two minutes to speak. I apologize for that. I jumped ahead to one of the questions, and you didn't see the question, because I never pressed the button. So nobody knows all the wiser, except me, that I made that mistake. Let's do the opening statements. And the opening statements will be pulled out of the hat, too. We're going to start with... Opening statement will be George Chenier. You have two minutes for your opening statements.
Thank you, Rich. I want to thank the committee for putting this together and allowing us the opportunity to come forward and hopefully sway our voters to either support us or some of the other candidates up here. As most of you know, my name is George Chenier. I've been a lifelong resident of this community, leaving a short time to go live in Florida, traveling back each summer to be here, so kind of like a snowbird. I'm a retired 22-year career firefighter for the town of Southbridge. I was two years in the police cadet program. I was a former member of the Southbridge Airport Commission and being its chairperson for many years, seeing the expansion of the taxiway and mechanics building. I was a member of the Southbridge Recreation Committee and being its chairman. I'm presently a member of the PPP Subcommittee, Persons of Protections in Property. And in my civic organization, I was a former member of the Southbridge Optimists Club and a member of D.C. Honor Council 199 Nights at Columbus. Also, most of my adult career, after retiring from the fire station, has been helping people. I was a member of the American Red Cross in Gainesville, Florida, being deployed to Hurricane Sandy in New York City and the Jersey shores. And I also went to the tornadoes in Moore, Oklahoma for deployment. And in fact, just recently, today, I was asked to deploy with the Team Rubicon to Arizona for extended flooding. I'm asking for support tonight to run for council, because I see the problems that have been arising for the low income in the elderly population of our community, and that's taxes. They affect all of us. But the most important thing that I'm running for is for us to take back our schools. It's important to be run in the village. It takes all of us to run, and to have our schools back is important. The state has failed, and that's one of my main things. Thank you.
Two minutes goes by fast, doesn't it, George?
Yeah, the red light scares you.
Yeah, and the light... The lights are really... They'll help keep you on time. As you go along, you'll notice those lights out there. Kevin Buckston, you'd be the next one to give an opening statement. Two minutes.
All right. Thank you very much. My name's Kevin Buckston. Some of you may have known me from my past experience talking before council as Citizens Forum. Over the years, I'm sure I filled out a fair amount of time with that. As far as the eight candidates here, I mean, it's a great choice for the voters to get out there, and all the candidates are top-quality candidates. Why am I here? It's over the years, I've stayed involved with the town government. I will admit, for two years of COVID, I never came back into this building. And when I did come back in, I had to re-establish my Trail Committee membership, which I'd like to apologize to my Trail Committee, because I'm missing a meeting with them right When I came back into the town hall after COVID, I saw a lot of new faces, a lot of new people, a lot of younger people who are very good at what they do. We have a great staff here. It's refreshing to see the amount of synergy that PEGD and Economic Development has done with all of our local citizen groups to combine their efforts together in different projects. The most recent one is the walking tour of downtown, which was put together through the Historic Committee, the Historic District Committee, as well as our Trail Committee. We're looking forward to a lot of great new projects coming to town, where there's a lot of effort to improve the recreation areas and the community itself. Community is a strong point of mine. I thank you for your time.
And Kevin, thank you very much. I'll pull up the next name right now. Again, we're at the opening statement portion. The candidates were told they could bring notes, they could type out their opening statements, they could bring whatever they want in, or they'd just be extemporaneously off the top of their heads. Ariel Ortiz is the next one. Ariel, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to start off by saying thank you to everyone who was involved in putting all of this together tonight. As you know by now, my name is Ariel Ortiz. I was born and raised in town by my mom and stepdad. I went to all the public elementary schools, then to Mary Wells, where I graduated eighth grade, and decided I wanted to take up a trade at Bay Path Technical High School and learned HVAC. Throughout my time as a high school student, I took on the responsibility of becoming a lifeguard. Then I trained to become a swim instructor at the YMCA. After graduating, I went on to work full-time as an HVAC technician for Southbridge Tire Then I landed a job for the Southbridge Public School Maintenance Department, where I really learned how bad the schools were doing under the receivership of the state. I decided to go back to Southbridge Tire, where I was promoted to my current position, running the HVAC department as a service manager. I'm currently serving on the Education and Human Service Subcommittee, and I've went to almost all the town council meetings this year. As a kid, all I've ever wanted was to do was to work and help others. All of my decisions I have made up to this point have shown me the value of hard work. I hope that I have your vote on June 13th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariel. Again, you have up to two minutes, and if it only takes a minute, that's fine, or a minute and a half, just can't go over two for the opening statements. We'll see who comes up next right here, and we'll be talking to Jaclyn Ryan. Jaclyn, you have two minutes for your opening statements.
Thank you, Rich. Good evening. My name is Jaclyn Ryan, and I'm a current member of the Southbridge Town Council. I'm running for reelection to finish the good work, the generational work that's been needed, and that I've started in my first term. When I came here three years ago, I made a lot of promises and said that Southbridge's future was bright. I'm happy to have kept my word on those promises, and I'm here to tell you that Southbridge's future is brighter than ever. We are a council that invested record amounts into our roads, expanded internet access, invested in infrastructure, fortified our accountable police department, supported our firefighters, invested in economic development and family activities like the rail trail or the youth center, which had its groundbreaking today. I also, as a councillor, had the honor to hold the state-appointed receiver accountable over budget transparency and win, because voters of this town have a right to know how their money's being spent. I'm also the councillor who led the fight for fare-free busing, because it's important to me that the most economically disadvantaged among us have a way to get to work, to school, to medical appointments, to go see friends and family. That's really important to me. Now, it's not perfect. We still have a lot more work to do. I want to make sure we get Southbridge Public Schools back in the hands of the school committee. The receivership system itself has shown its failures, and it's time we have a more collaborative process to make and solve the problems in Southbridge Public Schools. We also have to increase the already record amount of funding we've put into our roads and sidewalks. I go through five pairs of shoes a year easily, walking these sidewalks and roads. I know how important it is that we continue to invest in those. This election is critical, and will determine if we are to stick on the path we currently walk. We are a council that gets stuff done, not kicks stuff down the road. That's the height of irresponsibility. My name's Jaclyn Ryan, and I ask for your vote on June 13th to continue delivering results, not rhetoric for this town. Thank you.
Jaclyn, thank you very much. I saw you at the Rotary earlier today on the way into the debate or the forum, and there you were waving to the constituencies out there.
Love talking to voters and waving to voters.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, and thanks for your opening statement. Andrew Murch, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Good evening, Southbridge. My name is Andrew Murch, and I have resided in Southbridge for the last 10 years. Over the last 10 years, I've been a member of WCAC's Head Start and Early Head Start Policy Council, where I served as vice chair for two years. I've been the chairman of the Redevelopment Authority since 2019, and I've been an elected member of the Southbridge School Committee since 2019. I'm running because I want to continue to impact lasting and effective change in the town of Southbridge. The town of Southbridge is currently at a pivotal moment in its history, where we are on an economic uptick, as well as a series of improvements and infrastructure investments throughout town, that I would like to have a part in overseeing to its completion. As the chairman of the Southbridge Redevelopment Authority, I've helped lead the charge to have regular meetings, which at this time, we are currently meeting monthly. We actually just had a meeting right before our forum tonight, to where we meet monthly and sometimes even weekly, to ensure that the continued redevelopment of the central core in Southbridge is completed, such as projects like the Central Street Parking Lot, which has led to a pedestrian plaza that now hosts free concerts for families and children to attend in the town and drive economic foot traffic. We also want to continue to make infrastructure investments that help the neediest of the needy in this town. All of our roads are in rough shape, and we are... We only have the ability to piecemeal little by little at this time. But I do believe that a continued analysis of our budgets for DPW and continuously pushing for grants for Chapter 90 and other infrastructure investments, such as water and sewer, are vital to the continued growth of Southbridge. And if we can bundle these projects together and reduce the cost and increase the efficacy of the implementation of these projects, I do believe that it will truly help Southbridge continue to move forward. Thank you very much, and I humbly ask for your vote on June 13th.
I have a feeling we're going to hear about roads quite a bit, and we're going to hear about school receivership as the night goes along. And I'm hearing some of the major issues in town just in your opening statements. They're very good. Thank you. Joseph Dow, you have two minutes. Joseph is currently on the council and was one of the two incumbents.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Dow. I'm a current council... I came to Southbridge 25 years ago, and I love this town, a small town like where I came from back home. And I see a lot of issue. I work, I hear people, I feel their pain. This town, I need a lot to go through improvement. We did already start with the road and sidewalk, the trash and everything, and I'd like to stay on the council to continue to make sure those... What we start to continue, have them done correctly. I don't want to repeat everybody's schools and road and everything. We all know we need the school, we all know we need the road, we all need the sidewalk, we all know we need the trash, the people is hurt. We need more businesses in town, we need to be more friendly in the town hall itself. All the departments need more training, more education to welcome other people come to town and make businesses like this. We don't have to raise the tax on the residents. We let the big company come in, create jobs, and pay the tax for the residents of town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. And we'll go to the next opening statement, which would be Maria Torres. Maria, two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Maria Torres, and I'm running for town council. A little bit about myself, as I'm a hard-working mom, but I originally came from Ashland, Massachusetts. And the reason why I say that is because I had my first job at the town hall, being voted the youngest person to work there at the planning board. So I started at a young age. I'm motivated and passionate to focus on working with the school committee. We need to give them full support, consistent communication, and also coming up with some plans to keep our kids safer. I'm a mother of three children that attend two schools in this town, and so I really want to also focus on that first and foremost. Also, too, with my background, I have experience with residential and commercial engineering, design, and construction. I've worked in state construction projects, including parks, sports fields. My goal is to focus by working with the DPW and the town manager, so that we can come hand to hand and focus on our underground utilities, our road infrastructure, as well as our parks and our sports fields. I always like to say, you can't help if you're not involved. And like I always say, we all walk the same path, wearing different shoes. I appreciate your votes. Very honorable and hope to be a part of the town council. Vote for Maria Torres.
Maria, thank you very much. And there are people here tonight, and it's actually okay to clap for their opening statements, but... And I do apologize. I think that everyone should clap for everybody's opening statements at this point. It has been a little bit of confusion up here that I forgot to give a couple of the rules. That was one of them. You could actually clap during the debate, probably not so much, or during the forum, but the opening and certainly the closing statements as well. We have a number of people here tonight, and of course, we have a lot of people at home watching this on Channel 192. And I have to tell you that this program will be run ad nauseam for the next... Well, next month until the election comes up on Tuesday, second Tuesday of the month. I believe that's the 13th of June. One more person to do their opening statement would be Stephen Kelly. Stephen, your time. Two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Kelly. I'm running for town council because I believe in the potential of this town, and I want to see this town prosper, and I want to see everybody in this town prosper. I'm not from here. I'm a relative newcomer. I only moved here in 2015. My background is this. I grew up in Northborough, Massachusetts, not too far away from here, within Worcester County. I know the county well. I knew Southbridge when I was a kid. I played a football game out here as a JV. But I grew up in Northborough, and I went off to college, and then I went off to law school. And from that point on, my career has been about service. Immediately after law school in 1990, we started ginning up for the first Gulf War. My response was I joined the Air Force. I became a judge advocate, and I served our country until I retired in 2011. From that point on, when I got out of the service, I started practicing as an attorney. And I was in private practice for a couple of years, but that really was not satisfying to me. So I finally went... I finally got a job with the Public Defender's Office in Worcester. And I've been working with the Public Defender's Office since 2013. I see how government affects people, some of the most vulnerable people in our society. And I want government to have a positive impact on that population, as well as everybody else. My issues, prosperity, and it starts with getting rid of receivership. Certainly fixing our roads and rejuvenating the downtown. But it all starts from getting rid of receivership. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Thank you so much for your statements. We could give them one more round of applause for the entire group for even willing to do this tonight. Thank you so much. And Steve Kelly, thank you for your service, too. Thank you so much. Now we get to the questions. I tried to jump ahead a little bit, because I was kind of excited about a couple of the questions. The first question is usually kind of a softball-type question, but listen to it, because it brings back the old Southbridge of 1979. I don't know if you know what happened in 1979. Some of you probably do. Some of you may have forgotten. Back in 1979, Southbridge was one of the All-American Cities. Only one city in the country actually gets that title. Some cities do win it multiple times. We won it in 1979. That was a big day in Southbridge. I moved here. I worked at the local radio station at that time, WESO, but then moved to town about a year later, and every single storefront was filled on Main Street. There was a lot to be thankful and proud of, and being an All-American City back in 1979 was something certainly to be proud of. So here's my question. It's all about nostalgia. I will show you the question right now and read it to you. Back in 1979, Southbridge was named All-American City. What do you think would it take to do that again? And how would you restore community pride to possibly make it happen again? First question will be answered, and you have two minutes to answer this. Joseph Dow, this is your question. Two minutes, one-minute response time. Two minutes for you.
I heard of Southbridge used to be a beautiful town, and the only way we can bring back 1979 Southbridge, I just... When I start my... To speak earlier, I say we need businesses, we need to be friendly businesses. I know the school needs to be taken back and working on it with the education, but it's important, too, to be a friendly business and allow everybody come to town, give them our hand, and guide them to the right direction, to be able to fill all Main Street stores the way it was 1979. We're having a hard time a little bit right now. That's why we need more education, especially in the offices in the town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Now, to his left, and we'll actually go down the end, because that's how the questions will be answered in order of seating at this point. Kevin Buckston, you have a minute with that question about 1979 All-American City.
1979, I wasn't here. When I showed up in about 1980, I was 20 years old. The banner was still up at the time. Everybody was still talking about how proud they were of it. What brought that award to the town, I think, was community. And if we want to bring ourselves back to that era, I think we... Like I said, when I came back into town, we were in a rebuilding of after COVID. And our community, I think, is still in a rebuilding phase after COVID. Two years without anything going on hurt a lot of small business, and it also... We need to reinforce our safety nets and our community activities the way they were in 1979. The local churches, the safety nets. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. George Chenier, it's your turn for that question. One minute.
Thank you. 1979 All-American City, I remember it greatly. I had the privilege and honor of raising the large American flag with the ladder truck from the Southbridge Fire Department. It takes a community. A community and a whole community came together to make Southbridge an All-American City, and that's what it's going to take today. The malls came into business and killed the downtown. American Optical Company left and killed the downtown. We, as a community, have to come together as a community to bring it back. We can be an All-American City, but it takes everybody here. But the most important thing, back in 1979, we had a thriving school system. We had kids being educated and graduating in large numbers. Today, we don't have that. People look to come to Southbridge, they look at the school system first, and when you have a failed school system, they don't want to come here. So to be able to build a tax base, we need to take our schools back, and that'll be a beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Must have been a nice photo op when you were raising that flag that day. Proud time for Southbridge. Yeah, definitely. Maria Torres.
First, I'll start off by saying I wouldn't have purchased a home here if I did not see that there was potential. And it's a beautiful town. It has a lot of history. All it needs is some, you know, a nice restoration work, work with the historical... All it needs is some, you know, a nice restoration work, work with the historical society, focus on our leaders that we have currently, supporting our community, offer some affordable housing, as well as focus on our schools and elderly as well. I think it's, I think we're on the, I see the light in the tunnel. So I think with everyone's support and maybe even part of the town council, that would be definitely a goal is to restore the community again.
Thank you, Maria. Andrew Murch, back in 1979, where were you?
I'm going to be honest, my mother was seven years old back in 1979, from the ripe young age of 33. But I do believe that the biggest investments in order to make a community attractive need to be in education and infrastructure. You need to show businesses that you care not only about the children, but you care about the members of the community and ensuring that they have safe travels along the way to their businesses. Now, our school district is in a very tough spot. As a member of the school committee, I do not enjoy the fact that receivership is here and has been staying for quite some time. However, we are seeing our economic planning and development team downstairs, Peg Dean and Mark Karen especially, have been working diligently to bring businesses back into town and have done so successfully as they continue to fill stores on Central Street as well as Main Street. We just need to continue that good work and improve the marketing for our town. A lot of people don't think that we have to market ourselves to businesses and families in order to generate people coming in here to conduct business and to create families. And we need to make our town attractive. In order to do that, we need to make the necessary investments in infrastructure and education.
And thank you, Andrew. Andrew just made me feel a lot older, actually, with the beginning of that answer there.
I didn't pick the date I was born, I'm sorry.
1979, you and we did think about it, but back in 1979, we used to look back in people in 1929 that were 50 years, you know, older than us and think, that was back in the Stone Ages. I hope you don't look at us the same way. I don't think you do, but yeah, that's kind of cool that you weren't even around then. Jackie, Jaclyn Ryan.
Thank you. Well, I wasn't even a glimmer in my parents' eyes yet, so I'm not going to talk about then, but I can talk about is what we've been doing to keep Southbridge an All-American City. We talk about it like it's not an All-American City. It still is an All-American City. All of our cities right now are facing a lot of the similar problems, where they're facing higher housing costs. We've been addressing that. They've been facing poor infrastructure investments. We've been investing in those. They've been struggling with struggling horrible school systems. We have that in spades, and we've been working to make sure we hold the receiver accountable, and we do everything we can to bring Southbridge schools their power back because that's where it should be in the locality. All of those things, on top of making the investments in economic development, which we have been these last three years with Peg Dean and Mark Karen, we've seen nine new businesses just this year alone come in. That works for everybody because that lowers the tax base because they help supply the tax base. It's a win-win-win for everybody. I want to continue on that path of making those investments to support our businesses and hold our school system accountable.
Jackie, thank you. We have two more people to answer this question about the All-American City of 1979. How can you make it happen again? Steve Kelly, you're next.
Thank you. Maybe I shouldn't do this, but Jackie, I agree with you. We are an All-American City. We don't have to become one. Just look around. This city, this town is diverse. We have amazing social organizations, the Italian Club, the Lions Club, the Polish Club. Just look around. We have it all there. The vibrant Latino community, it's all here. They say that America is a melting pot. It's not. It's a mixed salad, and every pot of that salad brings something to the table. And we need to capitalize on our great diversity in this town and market that. Let's market that, all right? Come here. We are America. We are America. This is an All-American City. Thank you.
It's kind of interesting that Stephen was the first one to point out that All-American City, we can't be All-American City if we're still considering ourselves a town, and we are a town. But we were named All-American City, isn't that something? The title need to be fixed on that one because we're a town. Ariel, you're the next one and the last one to answer the question about 1979.
Like my other fellow candidate said, the school's a priority. We need to take the schools back. That's simple. We have to get the schools back so everyone starts coming into town. The other thing we have to do is we have to be pro-business. If we're not pro-business, no one's going to want to come here. We have to make it affordable for the businesses to come to town. If we don't do that, they're just going to come here, they're going to try to come, make a business here, and they're just going to leave. Simple. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ariel. Look, we've got another question to come up with now, and this is really about a lot of problems that we're having in town, that town is facing several major expenses in the near future, leading to potentially significant tax hikes. Let me show you the slide with the question right there. Items like the new fire station, trash, stormwater, possible PFAS contamination, school repair needs, climate impacts, and road work are all going to need funding. So here's your question. What innovative ways would you propose to handle the cost of these items and/or reduce town expenses in other areas? I'll pick a name out of the hat, the political hat that we have here, and Maria Torres, you're the first one to answer this question.
That's a very good question, considering the fire station project. So, you know, a good way to handle not going over the budgeted, projected costs that the new fire station is going to cost us is not to, is just to closely work with the construction manager that's been awarded the job, making sure that there's, you know, less addendum changes and change orders and mistakes in construction. One mistake can cost a lot of money. So if we have someone that can make sure that they're doing good quality control, the inspectors are inspecting and making sure that everyone is doing the job accordingly, you know, then I think we'll be okay, and that will help reduce the town expenses in other areas. Because again, we have to avoid any mistakes on any restoration or infrastructure work in our town because that one mistake is a very expensive one.
Thank you, Maria. We're asking you all kinds of questions about trash and stormwater, possible, nobody can possibly answer this question or do a follow-up in a minute, but it just gives you a handle of the type of expenses you're going to be looking at in the future and the innovative ways. It's hard to do that in a minute's worth of time, but actually, Andrew, you're up now to do that. You have one minute to follow up on that question.
I'll take that challenge. I think I can. So the biggest thing that we, when we look at investment, it's about dispersing the tax burden in order to be able to invest in these sort of projects. And we do also have more projects coming down the pipe, like the TIP project for La Rochelle in Maine. A lot of money is going to have to be generated for that as well. What the town's already doing and what we need to continue to do is look for ways to use grant money from Chapter 90 and other grant opportunities in order to be able to fund investments that make businesses want to come here, to show businesses that the town of Southbridge's government cares about the community enough that we want you to come here and we can show you that we are taking the necessary steps and investing in our town. The more businesses that come in, the less tax burden that our residents will have. And we need to continue to do our budget analysis as we move along and see if we can bundle water, sewer, and road projects together to reduce cost overruns and make sure that these projects are done in an effective manner, that everybody can benefit in a shorter period of time. Thank you.
Andrew, thank you very much for the answer on that. Jackie, you're up, one minute.
Thank you. So the way you reduce tax burdens on everybody is by expanding the economic base, and that's what we've been doing as a town council these last three years. We've been, we've added more and more businesses each year to our community. We've vitalized, we're starting to revitalize our center core, filling that with businesses, moving a lot of those social need organizations outside of the center core to other places in town so we can put more businesses in there. Because when more businesses come in, they pay more in taxes, which lowers everybody's expense. What I'm not going to apologize for is making the investments that have been needed for a generation now because past councils have failed to do their job. So the fire station was needed. If we had dealt with it in the early 2000s, it would have costed $5 million, not 30-plus. 2020, you know, vision looking back, but if you, we don't take care of these priorities now, if we don't make these investments now, it's going to cost our kids a heck of a lot more than what we're paying now. So yeah, there's going to be a slight bump, but the overall rate is still going down because of the economic development work we've been doing. So it may hurt in the short term, but what we're handing off to our kids is going to be far better off than what we had.
Jackie, thanks for your passion as well on that answer. Steve Kelly, you're up next, one minute.
Thank you. Well, some of the things we need to do are things that we are already doing. We have, Peg Dean has been able to get us a lot of grant money. We need to continue that. We need to also talk to our state and federal representatives. I know Councilor Mark Eddy met with our senators and on a recent trip to Washington, trying to get some help at that level. We need to, we need to really focus on Senator Fatman and Representative Durant and get them, and convince them to pass legislation or sponsor legislation that will get us additional funding out here. Then again, the more we invest in redevelopment, the higher our tax base will be, and that will help fund our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Ariel Ortiz, you have one minute, and again, it's about question number two.
Thank you. I would go after grants. I would do everything that I can do to try to find grant money for this. If it came down to it, we would start making cuts in other departments, stay away from, of course, the police and the fire, but there's things like we can stop running the lights on Main Street, we can stop street sweeping. There's plenty of money out there for us to cut in all of our departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariel. And Joseph Dow, a bunch of problems that you're aware of, being one of the incumbents.
I'm going to go back from the beginning when I start. Businesses, we have the weed dispenser, the money we get, and we, we only use them for the road. We put them as a plant. All the money we're going to get from the weed dispenser, we use them on the road. So when I say businesses, bring businesses, I think businesses that can take over the tax from the residents, from the citizen. We can help to bring big company here, not turning them away, be a friendly business. Then we can say, okay, now we need road, we need the trash, the fire department, like Councilor Jackie said, if we did it 10 years ago, it wouldn't be $27 million right now. But we can avoid the cost on the residents by bringing businesses in the town. We need to be more friendly for the business. Thank you.
And we'll look over to Kevin. Kevin Buxton.
Thank you for the question. Grant money is always great when you can get it. It's not always available, and sometimes it requires matching funds. So we, yes, consistently look for grants to help fund us. I will agree with Councilor Ryan that one of the reasons that we are so far behind on our infrastructure and our roads and everything is because previous councils decades ago stopped fixing things as they were broken. They just put Band-Aids on and tried to keep, it's all about the tax rate. There's a lot that needs to be looked at at tax rate. Every year, the residential tax rate, the residential tax rate needs to be looked at. Single-family homes are residential. Multifamily homes are commercial or should be considered residential commercial. It's a business. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And George, you're up next.
I agree with the council members here saying tonight, we've got to bring business into town, but we need to stop spending. We're not a rich community. We have poor income, poor people. We have elderly. Look what our expenses are going to be just in the next two years. Trash at almost $400 a year. You have a fire station coming online that they're predicting between $500 and $600 a year. You've got water and sewer, and you've got everyday living expenses. And when you have an ugly population and a poor population that pays the bills, how are you going to do it? My idea is to consolidate some services within the town hall, within the whole work community of the town, and work as a team. Council needs to work as a team in how they can achieve all these things that we want to do, but at an affordable cost. Are we going to get to the point where people can't afford to live here no more and not pay the bills? That's coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much, George. That's question number two. Now, we're going to move on to question number three. And in order to do so, the next question requires us to look at the town charter. Take a look at this quote from the town charter, and I'll read it to you as well as you can hear at home, from the Southbridge Town Charter, Section 245, which states, quote, "Town counselors shall interact with town officers and employees under the jurisdiction of the town manager solely through the manager, and neither the council nor its members shall give orders to any such officer or employee either publicly or privately." So here's your question. What does that phrasing mean to you? And how do you balance your role as a counselor with any other reasons that you have to be in town hall? Andrew Murch, you're the first one to answer that question, and you have two minutes.
That is a very good question and a very important one. I did have the opportunity to sit on the Charter Review Committee for a while, and this is a particular subject line in our charter that we reviewed in detail. At the end of the day, I can quote it down to a Bill Belichick quote, "Do your job." We as counselors have our job, if elected to town council, we as counselors have a job to lead this community and reach out to the community for ideas and to collaborate with organizations, businesses, and school districts and families in this community. That will be our responsibilities. But if you're coming to town hall to operate and say, get a permit for a business or to get a permit to add a deck onto the side of your house, that's just you as an individual. And to remember your role when you're going in there and spending money for a permit or asking questions in regards to getting one, you're there as a citizen, you're not there as a counselor. Don't mix the two. If you mix the two, it can lead to distrust from the community, especially if that interaction can go into a negative light, or if members of the town government that you did have that negative interaction with, it can get out there in the public eye and it can sow distrust, and that's not something we need currently, you know? In a time where government is viewed as this divisive entity, as town counselors, we need to step up and work with our community and interact. You know, I've been walking down, I walked down Hamilton Street a couple of weeks ago and talked with businesses, and really it was like, hey, what do you, what do you want to see change in where you operate your business? And that person said it was the first time that somebody had come down and asked him that question, and that's the most important work that we have to do, is realize that when we're out and about, that's when we're counselors. But if you're in here paying taxes or getting a permit, you're just a person. Remember that. Thank you.
Andrew, thank you very much for your response there. Jaclyn Ryan, one minute.
Thank you. It's pretty easy to me when you're a town, when you're an elected official, you have to make sure that when you come into town hall, people, that you keep in mind that people are going to look at you that way, regardless of how you behave or what intention you come in for. When you are a town counselor, there is a responsibility on you to be above board, even more so, and be open and transparent, and make sure that there's no way your position could be viewed as you giving an order to somebody you don't have the right to give an order to, or you putting pressure on somebody that's unneeded. The way you conduct yourself is really important. We've had employees leave because they've been mistreated by someone on council. That's sad, and that shouldn't happen. And the fact that it's happened a couple of times now is frustrating. We've got to make sure that we realize the privilege of serving here and that we have to hold ourselves to a higher standard, not a lesser standard, when it comes to interactions with town employees and the manager.
Jackie, thank you very much. These responses will be one minute. Steve Kelly, one minute.
Thank you. What that talks to me about is command and control. We as a council sit here as, the council sits as a We, as a council, sit here as -- the council sits as a board of directors. The town manager is a CEO. Not going to board of directors. Your directors are not interacting with the employees, directing the employees. They work through the CEO, and that's what their role of a counselor is. We make -- the council makes decisions about budget and about, you know, who is going to be Town Manager, hiring the Town Manager. But anything dealing with the town or a concern about any department should go, should follow the chain of command and go through the Town Hall, the Town Manager, rather. So, yes, I mean, our role, the role of the Town Council is to oversee everything, but the Town Manager is the one who executes and runs the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Ariel Ortiz.
Thank you. This comes down to process and procedure. At the end of the day, we hire a Town Manager, and we have to trust in that Town Manager to do his job. The Town Manager is responsible for all the department heads. He's going to come back and tell us that there's a department head not doing his job, and then we're going to handle it from there. Thank you.
And next, Joseph Dow.
I want to start, and the employee of the town have to recognize the same. Town council don't have no right by the charter to give an order to their employee, but it's all become about leader, Town Managers, training, and education to the employee of the town. When the Town Council walk in, regardless if he's doing business or Town Council, he should get the respect as well. Employee need to figure how to be customer service friendly, regardless if it's a Town Council or residence or businessman. And that's where I go back and I say, educate, training for all the department in the Town Hall, regardless, Town Hall, Fire Department, Police Department, education and training to be better customer service. We have no customer service in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Kevin Buxton.
I've been involved with town government for 30 years, maybe even more than that, and I cannot recall any occasion where I have ever told a town employee to do anything. They're not my employee. I'm merely a citizen. And when a counselor comes into this building, they need to understand that you're merely a citizen. Everybody has to go through the ethics training. Even mentioning your title as a Town Counselor is considered unethical. So as far as coming in here for private business, you have to come in here as a private citizen, and it's a no-brainer. The, like I said, we have a great staff here in the Town Hall, and for whatever reason that if there's a conflict or they're not considered business-friendly, I don't see it. Thank you.
And two more. George Chenier.
I think the charter is clear and specific. You want to go have an issue with a department head or an employee, you go through the Town Manager. And that's for the Town Manager to be able to have an idea on what is going to transpire. I've seen it many times through the course of my life here, and as a former Town Counsel, you go to the manager and say you want to talk to the Department Head, the DPW. He'll tell you, I'll give him a call. But if you have a problem with the Department Head, or you have a problem with a department, it's clear. You go to the Town Manager, and you ask for that meeting. The manager works for council. The manager, by charter, follows council's policy, set policy, and the directive of council. The Town Manager works for council, and that's in the charter. So they work hand in hand together. So you've got an issue, charter directs you to go see the manager, as the manager has an obligation to go to council. Thank you.
George, thank you. And last but not least, Maria Torres.
As I mentioned earlier, we are all walking the same path, wearing the different shoes. And so with that being said, we are a team. We have to work together. We have to communicate with each other, because one person might have an idea, the next person might have a better idea, and like-minded, being around like-minded people can work wonders. So, you know, working with the Town Manager is very important. Holding a town, being a Town Council, you need to provide, you know, great leadership quality, team building, perseverance, and great communication with your team, because the people that work at the Town Hall work very hard. Our community are great, great people, and we have to support them and also lead by example. So, you know, basically.
Maria, thank you very much. You know, this is the second time I've heard you say that, walking the same path but with different shoes. I wrote that down, so my wife and I get into an argument or anything like that. Going to use that on her and see how, I'll let you know how it works out, okay?
Keep me posted.
We're going to go on to question number four, which is, you know, this was actually mentioned in a couple of your opening statements here about school safety and, of course, the receivership. They've become perpetual issues with the state running our schools since 2016. Seven years? Seven years? Recently, the Thrive Act was filed in the legislature that calls for, among other things, ending receivership through the state. Let's take a look at the slide and get your question right here. What are your thoughts on safety in our schools and the state receivership of the school system? And when do you think the state returns control to the schools in this town? You would think we'd be asking this of the school committee. We ask it of the council, because, as you know what the school committee situation is, the council would have more authority over this. George Chenier, we're going to start with you on this question.
I think the most recent incident that we had at our high school shows that the system is failing. We had a student come into the high school with a gun, a handgun, went into the bathrooms, made a video of it, posted it on YouTube, Facebook, left the school, went over to a vehicle, put the gun in there, went back into the classroom or into the school, and behold and behold, four hours later, the police were notified. The police immediately got involved, and within minutes, as we hear, the police handled the situation. But four hours before they were notified, through what's going on in the newspapers and reporting, at nine o'clock in the morning, they knew something happened, and it still took two hours for the police to get notified of the situation. So for me, we have a field safety policy at the high school. They blocked doors open. They didn't have a lockdown, and they're reactionary because of what happened. It goes to show you, I don't think our receivership is working. I don't know what the Thrive Act is, to be honest with you. All I know is that we need to take our school back. I know, in reality, we just can't get the school back. There has to be a plan, and that plan has to be instituted by the receiver, which he has failed to do at this point in time. He would much rather make comments to school committee members that he's dealing with a Charlie Brown Lucy Show or a council that doesn't know how to balance its budget. But they gave him $34 million. They gave him the state mandated amount of money, plus an additional $400,000, I believe. So we need to take our schools back. If the state can't give us a plan on how to do it, maybe it's time for council, school committee to get together, write up a plan, this is what we want to do to take our school back, and submit it to the Department of Education. And that plan would also include safety for our children. Thank you.
George, I think a lot of people here don't know what the Thrive Act is, but all, and I didn't know either when this question actually came before me. All I know is that the Thrive Act is addressing school receivership from the legislative position down in Boston. Maybe they'll actually put a deadline on this, but the Thrive Act does address that. And George, I know that you kind of tried to fill me in a little bit about what it meant.
But don't you think?
I mean, George, I'm sorry, Gus, Gus Steves. And I still don't know.
Don't you think it's seven years too late? We have Lawrence, we have Fall River, I think it is, Holyoke, and Southbridge, and they're still in the receivership?
Holyoke, Lawrence, is all these towns, and we're just one of a number, and I don't even know if they know we're here, but we know they're here.
Correct.
Anyway.
Thank you.
But anyways, I didn't mean to go off on a tangent there, but I appreciate your answer, and thank you. Maria.
We definitely need to continue working with the school committee, focusing on coming up with more options for safety, upgrading our telecoms. I did see that in the budgets, and, you know, that's great, because that's going to be needed. But again, it's just being the backbone for the school committee, reevaluating the receivership of the school as well, and kind of just, you know, really focusing on the safety. It was a very scary situation for everyone, and we would like to avoid any future incidents like this happening again to our schools.
And in your opening statements, Maria, you did mention about the safety in the school system as one of the issues that you were thinking about. I'll go over to Andrew Murich.
Thank you. With my son being a student in the middle school, he's fixing to be a freshman next year, that particular incident really, really struck personal to me, and I made my comments known at Tuesday's school committee meeting. But we also need to plan, the Town Council needs to plan for all eventualities on exiting receivership. The Thrive Act, what it does is, once it's signed into law, it's got a calendar year, and that will end receivership. But the Thrive Act also ends the graduation requirement of MCAS, which has been a failed metric that the state has used to keep us under receivership, because our scores continue to stay low. Although talking to teachers and talking to families and students, that there have been some educational changes, especially in K through five, and improvements that can't be necessarily reflected with MCAS. So if we do away with the MCAS requirement, I truly believe that our schools have made great strides, and not because of receivership itself, but what receivership brought in bringing our community together to work together to make sure that we are helping our children, regardless of who's in charge. And that was the important part, is the disdain for receivership brought us together for our schools. Thank you.
Jaclyn, you're up next. Jaclyn Ryan. And she is the other incumbent on the dais today.
Thank you, Rich. No, when it comes to our schools, we need to make very clear, one, that we support the Thrive Act, because, one, we shouldn't have a failed teach-the-test system, which MCAS has always been. It shouldn't be a graduation requirement. It's a faulty metric, and it always has been a faulty metric, even before it became this weird MCAS Park hybrid test that they now offer. But beyond that, when it comes to student safety, I was quite upset during the EHS budget meeting when I asked the receiver what he was doing with the school engagement officers, and he was getting rid of them. He cut four of them from his budget. So what that tells me is that that level and that commitment to safety is not there. My first race I ever ran on was supporting good SROs in our schools, because they keep kids safe. We need to make sure that we have those people in our schools right now. We're doing everything possible. We're reevaluating policies. When an incident like this happens, you shouldn't run away. When you come out and meet with people and reevaluate stuff.
Jackie, thank you very much. Steve Kelly.
Thank you. Well, we do have to put some pressure on our elected representatives at the State House to support the Thrive Act, from what I understand. Neither one of them have voiced their support for that in very important legislation. Beyond that, you know, receivership is just, has failed. We're in it for seven years. The statute says that it's supposed to, the three-year turnaround plan is supposed to result in rapid improvement. We are now on our third three-year turnaround plan. So obviously, it's not working. It's time to go. And when you look at what districts this affects, Lawrence, Holyoke, and Southbridge, all of which are demographically very similar, it's a discriminatory policy. Bottom line, we need to take back our schools.
Ariel Ortiz. And again, we're talking about safety in the schools and the state receivership of the school system. When's it going to end?
Thank you. It's simple, again. We need to get rid of the receivership. I've worked for the school. I've been up there. I've seen what's going on. It's pure chaos. There's nothing up there with safety plans. There's nothing going on that they're helping us with. We need to move forward with the Thrive Act, because it talks about getting rid of the receivership, and that's what we need. When it comes down to it, we need to take our schools back, and we need to vote yes on question one, taking the schools back. It's simple. We're going to keep saying that, take the schools back from the state. They don't need to be here any longer. They've been here for seven years. They're coming at us with a three-year plan. You've been here for seven years. Why wasn't that plan earlier? Three years? You're telling me now that that's what it's going to take, three years to be done? And you've been here for seven? I'm over it. Thank you.
I think Ariel's preaching to the choir. And, you know, I don't blame you for there. I mean, thank you. I was passionate, too. And so, common sense as well. Joseph Dow.
School, school, school. We're being underseen, performed, and delivery of education. Now the state has been shown miserable game. People, this is our kids. Nobody's going to protect them better than us. June 13, vote yes on number one. Again, June 13, vote yes on number one. This is our kids. Nobody's going to protect them better than us. Thank you.
And I'm going to ask you, Joseph, I could follow up on that, because I'm not familiar the wording of the question. Number one, do you know what it is in regards to?
Take the school back.
Taking the school back.
Don't forget, June 13. Thank you.
You know, Joseph, I hope you do get a lot of people out of the polls. Last year, when we did this, we had passionate people speaking out of pocket and vote out, and 9% of the people showed up to vote. We had 91% of the people stay home, and...
That's our children. They want to be protected. They want better education. Vote for it. Ask for it. Fight for it.
Let's hope you bring it up to 20% this year. Wouldn't that be something? You know what? Need to go over to Kevin. Kevin Buxton, this question. If you need me to repeat the question, I will.
Yes, would you?
Okay. It is, what are your thoughts on the safety in our schools and the state receivership of the school system? And when do you think the state returns control of the schools to the town?
I watched a recent school committee meeting. I'm sorry to see the school committee being treated the way it is. Overall, I think one of the questions I would have is, why is it that we are not actively seeking the superintendent we need to replace the receiver? Are we going to try to kick the receiver out without having a superintendent ready to take over? It's like you want the training wheels off the bicycle, but you need to fix the flat tire first. There's no easy answers. However, when it comes to locked doors, that should be pretty simple. That door has to have a security system. Somewhere in the office, you have to have a light that says, "That door is ajar," and somebody has to address it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Got to move on to question number five, which really deals with citizen involvement. I mentioned the low turnout that we had last year of about 9%. A lot of people have to serve on committees as well. So this question does look at citizen involvement, and let's take a look at the question. How would you encourage people to join boards and commissions and otherwise get more involved in the town? How do you go about doing that? Question number five goes to Ariel. You're the first one to answer this. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I believe, you know, I'm 26, so I believe we need to have events, have events in town. And when you're having an event in town, you're going to bring people to it, and when you're at that event, you have to have someone there asking people to register to vote. They're going to ask you, I mean, there's a lot of people out there that are asking They're going to ask you, I mean, there's a lot of people out there that are asking, how do I register? What do I have to do? Where do I go? And if you have that event, you can explain that to the people on how to do it. Thank you.
I was reading in the paper today, I believe the last day to register to vote is June 2nd. Am I correct with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I got something right today, anyway. But June 2nd is your last chance to register. Just go down to Town Hall. It takes a couple of minutes. And I know that there are drives out there trying to get people to get out there and register to vote, and then vote. Where were we on that? Joseph Dow, you're next on this one question.
The question, how we're going to encourage people to join board and commission and otherwise get more involved in the town of Southbridge. People, that's your home. Southbridge is your home. Don't look at it like, oh, none of my business, I should sit back and just look. You can't complain if you're not involved. You need to come forward. You can ask any council. You can walk in the Town Hall. You can ask any employee. You need help. You need direction. Come see us. We will be out there. This is your future. Your kid's a future. If you don't get involved, you can't see Southbridge better. You want a Southbridge better? You want a good street, good business, good school education? You got to get involved. You can't sit home and say, we don't have all this. Come forward and do your job, too.
Thank you, Joseph. Citizen involvement, question number five. Kevin Buxton, you have a minute.
Well, I've done some citizen involvement over the years. Recycling committee in '96, landfill oversight, sustainability. And like I said, COVID threw a wrench in the works. Landfill oversight, sustainability, I think, got reabsorbed by the Board of Health. I think one of the quickest and easiest ways is, we've seen maybe some poor participation with citizens as far as YouTube goes, and people watching the various meetings that are available on YouTube. I think we need to look at stepping up the videos to livestream our meetings and giving the people the opportunity to participate through comments on live streaming. Waiting three days for me to hear what was said at a school committee meeting is problematic at best. We need to, we need videos to draw people, social media.
All about technology there. George Kenyer, how do you get people involved?
My father was an immigrant, came to this country during World War II, and he served this country and got his citizenship by serving in the American Army during that time. As we were growing up as children, my father always said to me and my siblings, give back to your community what your community gave you. And I always stuck with that. And they gave me a good education. They gave me a good job being as a fire, career firefighter for 22 years, allowing me a pension. So I felt it was important for me to serve my community because they served me during those times. I do that to my grandchildren and to my own kids. I feel that if you have your family involved, that they'll get their family involved. But some of the problem here is with the leadership of our community. We had multiple people volunteer for boards that sat in the town manager's office for months and months before being appointed. So that is some of the problem also. Thank you.
George, thank you. And Maria, citizen involvement.
So I would, doing things with the community has always been a great thing, and being involved, like, you know, beautify Southbridge. You go, you meet with kids in high school, you get to educate them, you know, to acknowledge them that they also have an opportunity because it starts with them, too. And they can continue moving forward and being educated and seeing us lead by example to want to join the boards and the commissions in the future. So we can always start with them, too. But then it begins with us, showing them what it is to be on the boards and the commissions, and what benefits it provides to our town, and just being involved with the community and hearing their voices and turning their verbal to a visual, you know, and seeing results. And they'll all follow to join the boards and commissions as well.
Andrew Murch, you'd be the next one for about a minute to talk about getting citizens involved.
Thank you. I actually agree with Ms. Torres' sentiments is that it's up to us to reach out and branch out and get people involved. And I do believe that, like she said, going to these events and talking to people and highlighting, you talk to people and talk about the projects that are going on in town, and you hear somebody say, well, I'm really glad the rail trail's coming in. Hey, there's an opening on the Trail Commission. If you would like to volunteer, go fill out the interest form, turn it into Town Hall. As a town council, we are leaders in our community first, but that means going out and encouraging other people to join us in that leading effort. And it does also start at a young age. And I do believe that the town council and the Town Hall should reach out a little bit more to the school system and try to coordinate events and times where students come to the Town Hall and see how the government actually works. You know, not a lot of people know the ins and outs that our town employees and town councillors go through. So giving students that opportunity to see it would encourage others to join.
Andrew, thank you very much. Jaclyn Ryan, same question.
Thank you, Rich. You know, this isn't something I can just talk about. It's something I'm happy to say I've worked on. When I first came on three years ago, that list of vacancies was triple its size. You can go check that. And we've been working on getting the redevelopment authority up and going. I got Mr. Murch here to actually get onto the board. And the reason I wanted to have that, get people involved, is because when we have more people involved, we have a better outcome. And making sure that we not only get more people, but we get people from all walks of life in our community, making sure we have more Latinx people on our boards has been a priority of mine because making sure they have a voice at the table is important, just like it's important for me to have out for LGBT people in their community have a voice. You know, it's about making sure you have a diversity of voices at the table to help make the round of decisions that are needed. And it's also on us as leaders to make sure that when we identify people, that we go after them and say, you should be on this. Go do this. Go volunteer. Go give them the energy to go do it. If you recognize somebody who has talent, don't let that talent go to waste. You have it used for Southbridge's future, all of our future. That's what I would continue to do.
Jackie, thank you very much. And we're looking at Steve Kelly, last person to answer question number five.
I'm not sure it's an involvement problem. I look at the number of candidates we have at Town Council, and wow, I mean, how much, we've all expressed an interest. We all want to serve our town. And this is not an involvement problem. It's a communication problem. I think it's hard to find information about how to get involved in town, in the town. You go on the website, there should be a list of positions that you can volunteer for. It's hard to get to that information, though. It's not right up on the front page. We also, the town needs, I think the town generally just needs to reach out to people and tap them on the shoulder and say, come and serve. I think a lot of people just want to be asked. And if you don't ask, you're not going to get a response. So I don't think it's an involvement problem. I think it's a communication problem. Thank you.
And thank you. And thank you all for all of your answers on that regarding citizen involvement. Question number six, let's put it up on the screen right here. What do you think Southbridge's most notable strength is and why? And how would you promote and build upon our town's strength? I don't think we'll spend a lot of time on this question. I think, if you don't mind, we'll shorten our answers to this one. If we could shorten them up to, well, we'll start with a two-minute and then go with about a 30-second response on that, if that's okay. Because we got some other questions we want to get to as well. Kevin Buxton, this is your question. What do you think Southbridge's most notable strength is and why? And how would you promote and build upon our town's strength? And Kevin, take two minutes to answer that, and the responses will be 30 seconds each.
Well, I keep going back to this community. There are great, there's great communities, great neighborhoods, but we need to maybe spend some more time organizing ourselves. You mentioned citizen participation. That's a major key. But just talking to your neighbors, I mean, in, you know, recently and going through the trash and recycling situation, a situation arose where the house I was living in had a couple of extra bags of recycling that wouldn't fit into the totter, as opposed to overfill it. Walk over to the neighbor. Do you mind if we put... Of course. But neighbors working together, people working together, the beautify Southbridge cleanup, it got delayed because of weather. Well, guess what? I started a week early. And guess what? I haven't stopped because every time I decide to take a walk, I always end up, I'll take the grabber and the bag. We need more of that. We need neighborhoods to say, don't wait for your government to tell you to pick up litter. If your neighborhood is dirty, organize something. Pick it up. I can't make it any simpler than that. We can't afford the DPW to come pick it up. It's up to us. If we want our taxes to stay low, then we need to start doing a little more of the little things that we can do to make the community better and to grow our community's family as a family.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. I'm going to call this the lightning round question because the responses, I'm going to cut back to 30 seconds. So Jackie, we'll give the 15-second warning. If you run a little over, no one's going to think anything less of you. But we'll start with question number six. And you've already answered it there. Why do you think Southbridge's most notable strength is and why? And how would you promote and build upon the town's strengths in 30 seconds? Go ahead, George.
For me, it's people, the diversity of our community. Look what you have up here tonight. The diversity of our community is important, and I think that is a great strength that we have. I think if we can bring unity instead of division, we'll go a long way. And I think that's the key to the thing. It's our great people of this community, the diversity of it. Thank you.
Maria Torres, question number six.
People. People are our strength, and we are a very strong community. We all, everybody, if we can all come together, we can, we're so strong. And then not only that, history, history, history and people. That's our strength.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to, you all set? Thank you, Maria. Andrew Murch.
Yes, our people are our biggest strength. We are a small town with a big city personality. And I think to promote and build upon that is to invest in areas where we can service the neediest of the needy and help more of our people. There's a large, there's a large portion of the highly densely populated areas in town that don't have a lot of the investment going to that. So if we show that we're going to invest in our people, our people will invest back in us, and it will continue to help Southbridge grow bigger and better than ever.
I can see bumper stickers all around town now, "Small town, big city personality." Thank you, Andrew. Jaclyn Ryan.
Thank you. What I would say Southbridge has is heart. What drew me here when I moved here eight years ago was its heart, its compassion, its ability to uplift and love everybody, no matter who you are, what life you walk. That's what made me come here. My friends were here. Everybody I got along with were here. That sense of community, that sense of heart, that sense of belonging to something bigger, it's not something you find in any of the towns around us. It's something you find here, unique in Southbridge. And I think it's what's made us so strong in the long term and able to deal with all of our adversity.
Jackie, thank you. Now, Steve Kelly, same question.
Our potential. Our potential is our greatest strength. And we have a lot of potential because of the great diversity of people in this community, the great diversity of people who have been here a long, long time, people who have been here relatively short time. But the great potential we have in this town that has been given to us from the past with our downtown layout, but what we should build on to get into the future, that's what our greatest, our greatest strength is, is simply our potential.
And Ariel, we'll move right over to you on that same question.
Thank you. As everyone already said, the people. It's always about the people, the generosity of the people. Thank you.
And Joseph.
Southbridge is all about all nationality. Doesn't matter where you're from, what color, what language you speak. When things happen, we all get together and we treat everybody like a family. Example, the tornado, 2011, everybody was one heart, one hand, and we don't look at each other, where you're from, what you speak, what colors. And this is what about Southbridge. Why is strong? And we're going to stay strong. Go Southbridge.
Thank you, Joseph. And you brought up the tornado even in that short time period. And thank you, and you're so right about that, too. I wanted to move along to question number seven, really, because it has to do with the search for a town manager. Let's look at the question here. The council is undergoing a formal search for a new permanent town manager. Now, what qualities do you think that person needs to have and why? This might take a little bit of time to answer in something like this. We'll give you two minutes, Jaclyn Ryan, to start it off.
Thank you. Well, this is, I have to say, this is my second town manager search since I've been on the council, and I have to say, the things I look for is somebody with a background in economic development, somebody with a background in government and actually working in local government. And right now, there's unfortunately a lack of quality people out there just because there's so many positions open, and not a lot of people, not a lot of young people are going to become town administrators. So making sure you find a quality person who's educated and actually able to do the job from day one is important. Another thing we really need to make sure this manager has is the ability to bring an objective worldview to the system itself and say, is this system working most efficiently for its citizens? Is it providing quick enough turnaround times when it comes to permits? Is it providing relief to those in the system who may work here, who may have some sort of issue while they work here? Is the resolution process quick? All of that tells me that they have the capability to look and evaluate and make sure we're doing everything right. There are many things this community does great on, but it's also important that we have somebody with that critical eye who's able to say, it's time to catch up with the times on that one. Or it's time to actually finally have an HR department because we haven't had one and we should have had one decades ago. So these are the stuff that we look for and that I'm looking for, in making sure we have a professional, accountable manager. It's more important that they know the job and the duties than them be somebody I know or somebody, my buddy. I'd rather have the best and the brightest, not just because they're my friend. So that's what I look for in a manager.
Thank you, Jackie. Steve Kelly, same question about the search for new town manager qualities that he might have or should have.
Thank you. One of the things I would look for is leadership. How can that person lead? How does that person lead? Are they a top-down leader? Or are they somebody that's going to empower their department heads to execute their roles? Are they a micromanager? Or are they somebody who just lets everybody do whatever they want? So leadership is the one thing that I'd be looking for. I'd want somebody who can inspire the town to achieve. I want somebody that's going to be able to bring people, bring business into the town. But that all stems from leadership and creating a direction for their department heads that, and getting support from their department heads for their vision. So leadership is the one thing I'd be looking for. Thank you.
Ariel Ortiz, about the town manager search.
Thank you. As a counselor, I'm going to be looking for someone who is going to be holding people accountable for what they're doing. I want them to be local, because if they're not local, someone like me who owns property in town, who pays taxes, who drives the roads, the town manager is not going to be driving all these roads or doing what I'm doing. I just want him to be here from town. Again, holding people accountable for what they're doing. If they're not doing their job... job, needs to take care of it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ariel. And Joseph Dow.
We need a leadership, not for paycheck. There's a lot of manager right now going around just for a paycheck. We need a person, like Ariel say, local. He's hard for the town of Southbridge. Discipline people if they're doing wrong or they're not correct. People and their job. Educate their department. I go back to education is important because as a businessman, I lived in town 25 years, there's still some lack in some of the department. They're not friendly. They need to be more education, customer service. So I hope I see town manager strong. He can discipline, he can hire and fire, not worry to, when he can find another employee to cover that position. I hope I can find a strong one, a real man. Thank you.
And we'll move over to the other side now for Kevin Buckston. One minute, Kevin.
Because this is about the town manager, I'd like to clarify something that you had said earlier about, technically, we are the city known as the town of Southbridge. It doesn't matter how big we ever get, we'll still have known as the town of Southbridge attached to us. However, we are a city. We should have a, a town manager, and I've seen quite a few of them. Florence Chandler, Chris Clark, Clayton Kyleisle. And I've seen managers who only key on five counselors. All they have to get is five counselors. The other four don't matter. I have seen town managers who operate on that system. I don't like to see that. I'd like to see the council brought to consensus and, and not just have a cabal of five that's going to be puppets for the town manager. Thank you.
And George Chenya.
For me, I wanna see a candidate that's gonna be a leader. And for that, for that person to follow the policies and directives set forth by council and understand that he's working for the council and that he's not, we're not working for them. So having somebody that's a leader and have the ability to follow the policies and directives set forth by council. And the other thing I think would be important is, when it comes time to hire a new manager, it would be nice that that manager actually fulfilled the promises that were done by previous managers, that they were gonna come and live in this community. I think if they eat, sleep, and feel the pain by living in this community, they would better serve us.
And Maria, gonna look at you right now to answer that same question about the town manager search and the qualities that are needed.
A native would be very good to, to be a town manager. But also too, just someone that is knowledgeable on, 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 you know, the, the town rules and regulations and follows, you know, the policies and, you know, and plays by the book. And, and also is fair with, with, with everyone that they work with, as well as disciplinary when, when the time needs. Also too, someone that, you know, that has great leadership qualities, that, you know, has perseverance, as well as, you know, great team building skills to keep everyone, you know, together and working as a team, as well as, you know, communication.
And, and Andrew, you'd be the last one to answer this question. Question number seven about the town manager search.
I think the biggest qualities for me are not necessarily what go on a resume, but it's the intangibles, you know. Does our town manage, does this candidate have the ability to collaborate with all different walks of life and, and perspectives and be able to find that common ground and have the motive, the self-motivation to continue to get things done? I think the intang, we look at resumes and, and native, in, in having native residents in town, but I think what the, we, we've lacked in a town manager as of recent is somebody who, well, to put it as Teddy Roosevelt, can speak softly and carry a big stick. You know, the, the holding our departments accountable and making sure everything is, is prim and proper is the, is a necessary job duty of the town manager. But it's also about working with the community and, and getting out there and, and being involved, not just running the show here in these halls, but also continuing to branch out and hearing for members of the community. So that way, the town manager can also be informed by the council to make the best decision on the policies that they want to implement. But to make sure that he hears firsthand how these policies that the town council are implementing are working, because he can make the necessary changes as a manager.
Okay. Thank you. You know, the next question really is a follow-up to the question that we just went through. This is one of those issues and vatted back and forth around town in the town council. It has to do with the residency requirement for the town manager. Here's a question. What's your stance on this issue? Do you think Southbridge, or, or do you think it should be a requirement that the town manager live in Southbridge? Think about that. Take two minutes to answer it. Stephen Kelly.
Thank you. Actually, I don't think that we should make it a requirement that the town manager live in Southbridge. My concern with that is I want the best possible candidate for Southbridge. Not necessarily a resident, but I would certainly want, would hope that the person would consider living in Southbridge. I would want that person out in the community. But the problem with making, with, 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 sending a, a notice out saying that we want a town manager who will live in Southbridge and that's a requirement, is you're gonna, you're gonna seriously limit your candidate pool. You're not gonna get the best candidates. And we want the best candidates for our town. We want the, we want, we want a town manager who will be a leader. All right? He will be a leader in economic development. He will inspire the town employees to follow his vision or her vision. But we don't, but to, to make them a resident, to, to require that they be a resident, now we're really, we're really limiting the, the candidate pool. And I really don't think that that's appropriate. I, I certainly would, would, would interview, when, in, in the interview process, I would wanna know what his, what that person's intentions were. Would they consider living in Southbridge? If not, how would they, how would they expect to get out in the community and, and interact with, with the, the town residents? Would they attend community events? Would they be a presence? But to say that, you know, we want them to be a resident, boy, you're really, you're really gonna limit your, your talent pool. And I just don't think that would be in the best interests of our community. Thank you.
Ariel, what do you think of Steve's concern about that? He says it doesn't make it a requirement. What do you think?
Well, I guess I have to disagree. I believe it is a requirement. He needs to live in town or she needs to live in town. If they don't live in town, what is gonna hold them to do the right thing for Southbridge? Nothing. They're just gonna leave, come to work, go home, and that's it. They need to be here, they need to see what we're going through, they need to pay the taxes that we're paying. They need to be for us. Thank you.
Joseph, you're on the, obviously the town council now. What do you think? Should it be a requirement?
Requirement? My experience, yes. Because like Steve say, we're gonna eliminate the candidate. No. Southbridge is strong. We have a smart people, strong people, educated people, regardless if the school's kinda weak a little bit, we have a people that are educated. Southbridge used to be strong before, we're still strong. We can have a good candidate, we want person to feel the pain we're feeling. We, we don't want person come and take our money and, and walk away. And, and he need to understand our, our town, our people, they're all minority people, different nationality. He need to be able to communicate with them and see the low and the high and look at them at the same level. It's important to be from town, it's important to live in town. This is my opinion, and that's what we need. And hire people from town too, as well. Thank you.
Joseph, thank you very much. And we'll go over to Kevin Buckston now.
We're already seeing some frustration with our interim town manager. Nothing against the gentleman, he's doing a part-time job and filling in. In the past, we've usually seen the finance director or the chief of police sitting in as interim town manager. As far as living in town, he has to be with understanding that either himself or his team has to be available for these nighttime meetings that occur all week, oh, any time of the week. His town employees have to show up for meetings at 6:30, maybe two hours long. They're issued comp time, which means that for the two hours they put in from 6 to 8, they'll be able to maybe take some time off. But just the schedule alone requires that if you're traveling back and forth, I think you, you're going to be very hindered in your schedule, and you're gonna require a team that can cover your back.
So what would you say? That it should be a requirement?
I would agree that it's, it cuts down on the pool of available candidates. Maybe you could put a five-year period on it, because we've seen in the past some town managers having difficulty selling their previous home to get a new home and blah, 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 blah. Or I, we do recall a, a town manager who I believe held an apartment for his residency here in town, but still maintained a home elsewhere.
Okay, Kevin, I'm gonna put you down as a definite maybe on that one, then. George Chenya, you already addressed this in your last question, when you were answering it. Sounded like you're a yes on this one.
Yes, I am. I believe that the town manager should live in our community and, and feel the pain and, and the joys of the community. But under the present charter, potential change coming forward, the charter does give the town manager or the, or the council the ability to hire somebody and not be a town resident, if he can prove his case. So at least the charter gives the ability if that person wants to be a town manager and the council wants to have that person, the charter gives the ability to allow him not to be a resident of the community. But I think it's only, it's important to be a member of this community all the time. And I'll even go one step further, I believe department heads should also be members of, living in this community also. But that's, that's my feeling. We, we pay the bill, live here. You know, it's a shame when they're hours away or, and they can't get here. Or, or they work somewhere else, being part of another community somewhere else and can't get here. Live here, work here, and we'll pay you here.
Thank you, George. Maria Torres, does it? Or do you think it should be a requirement? Town manager lives in town.
I do not think it should be a requirement. I think the town manager should just have drive, passion and motivation to make, you know, to be town manager. There's always options for removing and relocating and things like that. But besides that, I don't, I don't think it should be a requirement.
All right. And Andrew?
I'm gonna be quite frank. I don't think, if you look at the top 10 jobs that students are looking into as they graduate, I don't believe municipal management is one of them. So, no, if we can't require somebody to live in this town, especially with the housing market the way it is, let's be honest, it's way too overpriced. So to ask somebody to sell their home and purchase another one and, and come work for a town that needs, needs assistance, I think it's too big of an ask. And, you know, I want the best candidate here that's gonna be motivated to manage their time wisely and properly. Again, these intangibles that I spoke of that don't go on paper, you know. Leave the house early so you can get here half an hour before we're supposed to open, so that way you can get stuff done. That's the intangibles that we need to look for in a town manager, and I'm not gonna limit it because Southbridge only has less than 20,000 people that live here. If we could find one person that has a municipal management degree and has the background and experience required, that'd be fantastic, and they should have already applied by now. But the point is, is it's a limited job field, there's limited candidates, so we have to go and reach out for what we need.
All right, Andrew. And then we're back to Jaclyn on this question.
Thank you. So my, my stance is that I don't believe we should limit candidates. I don't believe personally that during the candidate selection process, that they should be limited whether or not they're residents. I'm a personal believer of encouraging people to wanna be here. I support the current policy, which is within a year, you get moved in to town. And the way you do that is by negotiating during the negotiation process. If there's fees, if there's hardships, if, you know, some, like, the last one had family who had to stay out there, but he had, he came here. So it's about working with those scenarios, and there's, there's many ways in which somebody can live here and be here, other than purchasing a home. Because I, I view the whole purchasing a home thing as the only way to prove you live here is kinda ridiculous and disenfranchises half of people who live here and contribute to this community. So I think it's up to the council all the time to be negotiating, and if that's what they want, to make sure they negotiate with the manager candidate to get them here within the year. That's the way I should do it. Don't exclude candidates, but get them here soon.
So if you had to vote on it, and the reason I'm asking you to be specific on it is because this is a question that is being addressed or it's being considered for a future election, that it could even become a binding question at one time. Should the town require the town manager to live in Southbridge? You'd have to vote yes or no, and you would vote, if you had to vote...
If I, if I had to vote for that, I would vote no, specifically because I don't wanna limit our candidate pool. I think we need to be flexible, and we need to be willing to meet with people and say, okay, I want to attract the best and the brightest here. What do I have to do as a counselor to negotiate with them to get them here? And I don't want some black and white rule that's gonna stop my ability to negotiate with the best candidate.
This is a question that could possibly come up in a future election, and we're right down the middle with the eight people that we have here, really. That's, that's where we stand. Put it out in front of the public, you might find that you're 50/50, and that could be divisive, that could be a little bit scary. But that would be a possible question for the future. I'm glad we don't have to address that anymore tonight. You know, you guys have done a terrific job, and we're actually running pretty well as far as timing is concerned. Have a couple other questions here, and these are kinda just being thrown out to you because we're all done going through the hat there. All the, the hat is empty right now, and I just wanna ask you a quick question. Let me put it on the board. We've talked about a bunch of issues today. We've talked about a bunch of issues that need to be addressed in town. Can you think of some top issue that maybe needs to be addressed in town? What would your number one issue be? And it could be something we've already talked about, or something that we didn't bring up tonight. Raise your hand, and we'll call on you on this one. And it'll be in one-minute answers. Steve, you had your hand raised. Steve Kelly.
My number one, my number one issue is, is our current school receivership. I really feel that this situation is, is killing us economically. What business wants to establish any type of permanency here when they, when we have to deal with these precarious schools situation? What family wants to move to Southbridge when they can't be certain that their children are getting a, a good education? We have, Southbridge has one of the highest, or one of the, rather, one of the lowest teacher retention rates in the state. In fact, I think the only district that is below us is Holyoke, another receivership district. Seven years of receivership, and yet we haven't seen a modicum of improvement in our test scores. So yes, receivership is the, is the, is the number one issue.
That's what you feel that the number one issue is. And you can bring up another issue that we haven't discussed. Andrew Murch.
I would say a top issue for us is diversity in our town employees and our school employees and our elected officials. We are, as, as candidates have alluded to this evening, we are a very diverse town. That's what made us an all-American town back in 1979, and continues to truly be an all-American town today. But I don't see the reflection of our community necessarily everywhere I go, when I come into town hall, or when I go to the school systems, or when I watch a town council meeting. And it needs to, we need to continue to promote diverse opportunities for our community and to be involved and to make sure that our school system, our, our town government truly reflects our community. And, and it's not an issue you put on a ballot, it's not an issue you put up to a vote on a town council. It's an issue that us as counselors need to lead the charge on, and that involves us getting out in the community and talking to our constituents and getting them involved. That's the top issue for me.
So we've had two of you answer the question, and if there are anybody else who wants to answer that question, Jaclyn Ryan, top issue that you think needs addressing.
Thank you. Making Southbridge affordable for people like me. Making Southbridge affordable for people like me. We have people my age leaving in droves because of how expensive housing is, because of how expensive it is, thank God, not here, to use the bus system. Things like that determine whether or not people are going to be here. So making the investments in those infrastructure, but also making sure that we make Southbridge more affordable, keeping the bus system free so that way those with the least among us or have medical conditions can get to and from where they need to be. Making sure there's actually true affordable housing in this community. I cannot believe, I go online and I look at a two-bedroom for nearly $2,000. That is not the growing rate in Southbridge, and nobody's going to tell me that's the growing rate in Southbridge. So we need to do more to actually bring more affordable apartments here to actually keep our kids here. Because if we don't, they're going to go to states like North Carolina or South Carolina where it's cheaper to live. It's just the facts of the situation. So you know what the top issue is for me? Affordability, so we can keep our people here instead of leaving.
Joseph Dow, I saw your hand through us.
Southbridge is strong. You're looking for the number one issue. We have a lot of issues, but number one is economic development. When we bring businesses and we hire people, educated and noneducated, low and higher, that's when you work on Southbridge. That's when you move from low income and look at Southbridge grant and all that. I believe Southbridge, we can do it. We don't need to put our hand out for grant and low-income people, and I think we can make them strong. The people here is low, they can be hired with us. We can bring company, we can bring businesses, we can focus on those people, not educated. There are a lot of skilled people out there. Maybe they're not good in education, but their hand, their hand's smart. That's where we need to focus in Southbridge, and then we don't have to look for a low town. We're a higher town. I came here 25 years ago, I slept on the street, and look what I am now. Thank you very much.
Kevin Buxton, I saw your hand as well.
Yes, and I would have to piggyback on Ms. Ryan's comments of affordability. We are losing control. People are leaving Southbridge because they, not only the poor can't afford the housing, but even the middle class are now starting to leave because there's just cheaper places to live. Affordability is a key aspect, and when we talk about affordable housing, sometimes we lump it together with low-income housing. One of the problems I think Southbridge has had, one of the reasons our rents have gotten so high, is because of subsidized low-income housing. You can't afford a $2,000 apartment. However, if you can get housing assistance where it only costs you 400 and the state pays 1,600, that's why the landlord asks for 2,000. Thank you.
So anybody else who wants to take a look at that question? George, go ahead.
For me, the number one issue is the schools. If you can fix our schools, if we can take control back of our schools, then you're going to see the people coming back to this community. You go ask the people why they're leaving, you go ask the people why they don't want to come here, and they're going to tell you, why do I want to come here with a school system the way it is? So we need to take that school back, and we need to bring the school to what it used to be. Educating our people, for me, the school, and I will work, if I'm elected, I will promise that I will work hard to have our schools come back to us. Thank you.
I looked at you, Ariel, and I called on George. I kind of got you two mixed up. I don't know why. Maybe you look so much alike. But Ariel, you had a response as well.
Thank you, thank you.
He's heavier than me.
The number one issue, again, the schools. Who wants to move here if they can't send their kids to a good school? There's no one out there who's going to move to Southbridge if we do not get the schools back from the state. It's just simple. I mean, the schools are awful, they're in chaos, there's nothing good for the kids to do up there. They're not learning anything, they're not doing anything up there. We need to get the schools back, and once we get the schools back, everything's going to fall in order. People are not going to move to Southbridge because we have nice roads. Thank you.
And Maria, did you want to chime in at all? You'd be the last one on this one.
Schools are definitely a huge factor, but also to presentability of our town. You know, people come to an open house, they look at the conditions that are existing in our downtown, all these closed abandoned, you know, retail spots in the main street. Our goal is going to try to fill those in. And really, just, the town is, Main Street is so beautiful, and people have mentioned that it is a really nice downtown, and it has always been since 1979. But with that being said, you know, with working really hard by focusing on the restoration, getting funding, you know, and looking to see what's available for our town through the State House, and basically, you know, bringing, just on affordable housing, there's a lot of different programs. It's not just only subsidy. There's, you know, there's tax credit programs, there's income, you know, different types of income mediums that you can, you know, design.
Okay. Maria, thank you. You know, we're pretty close to 9 o'clock, we're about 8:54, I believe that the time is right now. My watch is off by three minutes. Maybe I could have one of your tech people actually show me how to adjust the time on this thing, because it's been a long time since I've changed it. But I did want to just throw in this last question, which is question number 10. And really, the question, and we've asked this in previous debates as well or forums, if you're sitting there and you say, geez, I wish he had asked me about this or that, is there a question that you wished that we had asked you tonight? And what would your answer have been on that question? And I have hands all over the place because I have a feeling we missed a couple of questions. Andrew, we just heard, why don't we go with you on this one?
I'm going to be honest. I would have loved to hear, heard a question regarding water conservation in our town. You know, water, water conservation is a big factor that doesn't really get discussed a lot, but with Amazon and the development, with Amazon Development in Charlton being in an area that we supply, you know, there's, we're going to have to reanalyze our water conservation efforts here and maybe work with Charlton and Sturbridge and other towns to create a community collaborative effort to ensure that our area is, we can provide water to all of our residents and try to make it more affordable to ensure that we have good quality water to our residents and that we have a strong conservation plan. So as we deal with the results of climate change and further business investment and development in the area, that we know that we have, we can fill our cups, we can fill our cups full of water and know that it's good quality, it's going to be there, and it's affordable. Thank you.
Somebody else? A question that you wished I had asked? Jaclyn Ryan?
Thank you. I wish you had asked us about what we're going to do for recreation and family fun events here in town. It's so important, the people are going to not only look at schools, and they're not only going to look at roads and economic opportunity, they're going to look at other things to do out there. And making sure we have things to do, whether that be the youth center, which had its groundbreaking today, getting the rail trail done, which has been talked about for nearly 30 years Doing stuff and having things for our kids to do, to get off their phones, away from social media. Social media is destroying a lot of people's lives. And it's time that we really try to encourage as a community more outdoor play, more outdoor activities, which is why I'm really happy the rail trail is coming as an avid biker and kayaker and camper. It's really important that we provide those outdoor activities to kids and families, and they're not just staying cooped up inside all the time. Because I think that's part of the reason why we have such a hard time communicating with each other is because we lock each other up for two years during COVID. So I think that if we have more to do outdoors with families, kids and parents would be happier.
Joseph, I saw your hand as well.
Thank you. I wish you asked what we have a plan for the elderly. The people spend all their life to keep that town going, raise their family. What we have a plan to help them regarding the tax, the trash, their bills, what we can provide to make whatever left of their life countable in this town. This is what I wish you asked. Thank you.
George?
One thing I'm surprised that wasn't asked, and it's still not even asked during any of the council meetings in homelessness. As a community, we do very little with the homeless. As a city government, we don't do anything of homeless. We have groups out there that do, we have St. Luke's, that is a homeless shelter. We have so many more people living out in the streets, out in the woods. We had our veterans homeless shelter closed down. I'm just, I wish there would have been more questions asked about homelessness and how we as a community can do a better job with helping these people with homelessness. I mean, we see it every day when you walk, you hear it. If you've listened to a police scanner, you'll hear it every day about people living in the woods in tents, campers being put on streets, living in those kind of things. And I think we as a community needs to get together with our civic groups, our faith groups, and us as a community to work on the homeless population of our town.
Okay, George, thank you. And Kevin Buxton?
Yes, I'd have to agree with George. All of our safety nets need to be intact in there. You know, we talk about community policing, and I'm sure the police department would be the first to tell you that without the social services to repair some of the damages that they see in their job, without the social services there to help those people, to help them find affordable housing, to help them find treatment if they have an addiction problem, to help them find a way to stay here in town. Because we only, we're limited with St. Luke's. St. Luke's is usually full of women and children, believe it or not. I had an opportunity to stop into the police station, a young man who got removed from St. Luke's, and the last thing, he went to pick up his duffel bag and his backpack. The last, the police officer was rather kind, but the last thing he said was, don't miss that bus. Meaning, he had to catch a bus to either Auburn or Worcester to find a homeless shelter, and that's just, that's just throwing people away. Thank you.
Looking at you right now, Steve. Steve Kelly? What did you want us to ask about tonight?
I think I would have liked to have been asked about the current tax assessments going on in town. I think there's, I see a big issue here. Since 2020, housing values in this town have gone up 30% to 35%. So this is going to mean a huge new tax bill for our residents. I'm wondering, a lot of these increases were the result of COVID-era home sales and the craziness that happened with people, you know, overbidding for homes, people who couldn't afford homes in the Boston metro or eastern suburbs of Worcester County, moving out here and bidding on homes in this area. It's raised our, it's raised housing values a significant amount. I would like to see us perhaps put a hold on these assessments for a year or two to see if the market stabilizes and people aren't going to wind up underwater. Thank you.
Anyone else want to weigh in on that question? Any question you thought we should have asked tonight? If not, I made myself a note to make sure we have closing statements. I forgot about the opening statements, but closing, I'm ready for. And it's about a minute each is what we're going to ask you to do, and we're going to go from left to right on these closing statements. Take about a minute to say whatever you want. Talk directly into the red light camera over there as you're talking to a lot more people at home than what you have here. Go ahead, Kevin. One minute.
Thank you very much for this program. What can I say in a minute? Like I started with, we have a great choice for our residents to get out there and vote on April 13th. The biggest thing we need is our community to show that we do care about who sits at these seats, and we do care about what programs and activities that we put together to bring together our communities. I find it hard, even for myself, who am I going to vote for? I have to throw myself, I suppose, at least third in there. I just, I compliment all of you, and I look forward to seeing voters two weeks before the election. I'll start being out, shaking hands, and hope to see you on Election Day. Vote for me, vote for anyone. You're not really going to hit a loser here. Thank you.
George Chenier, one minute with a closing statement.
Again, I want to thank the committee for taking the time to do this event. I want to thank all the candidates for partaking in this also. We have great candidates, all very capable of being part of this community. The most important thing is on Tuesday, June 13th, to go out and vote. And all I can do is promise you that if you vote for me and I should get elected, I promise you that I'll work hard for your community and try to do the best that I can. So again, thank you, and get out and vote. No matter who you vote for, it's important to get out and vote. Thank you.
And thank you, George. Maria, closing statements.
I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity today to present myself and show you guys what I have to offer and what I can bring to the table to our town. I would be very honored to be town council. I feel like I have a lot to offer as well as the passion and love that I have for our community and our children and our elderly, okay? And so definitely vote on June 13th. Vote for Maria Torres, and thanks to all of you. And look forward to continuing seeing you guys around, and if you see me, make sure to wave, and, you know, we could take a quick walk together, wearing different shoes, okay? But, and the rail trail, okay? I'll meet you there. But thank you very much for your time, and please vote. If you're not registered, make sure to go and register. Your opinions and your voice matters to us, and I appreciate all of your time and consideration. Thank you.
Andrew Murch, closing statements.
I would like to thank the candidate forum committee and Southbridge Cable TV and those that have put on this event. The election on June 13th is not just a one-issue election. Yes, our schools are in desperate need of our return into control. However, we are at a turning point, and in a good turning point in our town's history, where we are looking forward to the 21st century in further infrastructure investments and continuing the already growing economic development and planning progress that they have made over the last year, and as well as reaching out to our students, our elderly, our, throughout the whole entire community, to get people involved and to continue to help. I humbly ask for your vote on June 13th because it's about schools, it's about roads, it's about our grandparents, our parents, our children, our parks, our sidewalks, our friends and our family. And that's all on the ballot on June 13th, so I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
And Jaclyn Ryan, I'm sure you have some closing thoughts as well.
Thank you, Rich. First, I just want to say thank you to Rich. I think this is the fourth time I've met here with you, and to Maureen and Gus. Y'all always put on a wonderful event, and I want to thank everybody up here. It's not easy to put your name up on a ballot and run for office. Trust me, I've done it a lot now. Thank you. Your community thanks you for what you're doing. I humbly ask for your vote on June 13th to continue the good work that I've been doing these last three years. If you want to make sure we make investments in roads, I'm your girl. If you want to make sure we continue to keep buses free for our most disadvantaged people in our community, I'm your girl. If you want to make sure that we fight for progress for all of our families, I'm your girl. If you want to make sure that we hold the system accountable and win, I'm your girl because I've done that. And I'm going to make sure that I fight for you every single day, because I'm not in this for me. I'm in this to make sure that what I hand off to the kids, the next generation of leadership, is going to be better off than what I got. This is my last term, win or lose, this is it. I want to continue the good work I've done and fight for this community. Thank you.
The passion of Jackie. There you go. Steve Kelly, closing statements.
Like everybody else, I want to thank, I want to thank everybody who was involved in putting this event on. This has been amazing. Really... Really appreciate the opportunity to address the voters in this forum. I'm in this to see Southbridge prosper. I see prosperity in three ways. The path to prosperity is threefold. First, we have got to get back control of our schools. We can't really move forward economically, despite all some of the progress that has been made in other areas, without getting back our schools. That is, that is number one. Number two, we have to continue the efforts and improve upon the efforts to rejuvenate our downtown. And number three, we need to improve our, continue to improve our infrastructure in a more even aggressive manner. But on June 13th, I would, I'm going to ask you to vote for me so that I can continue, so that I can serve you, the residents of Southbridge.
Thank you very much, Steve. Ariel Ortiz, your closing statements.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank everyone who helped put this together tonight, especially Mr. Merrill and all the candidates. If there's one thing I'd ask for you to remember about me, is that my number one value is hard work. I promise to put the same hard work and determination into being a town councillor as I do with everything else. I will make sure I hold people accountable for the spending of your tax dollars. I appreciate the opportunity to have, I appreciate the opportunity to have a chance to speak to you tonight, and again, I ask for your vote on June 13th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ariel. And we'll finish up now with Joseph Dow, incumbent.
I want to thank the community that went and put that together. This is my first time. I know I've been council already, but this is the first experience I get. Last time, I don't have that. And I want to say, Southbridge is better from all of us. People, that's your voice, who you're going to be elected to represent you. I want to thank all the people who voted for me the last time. We're doing our best, it's a lot of progress, it's going. You probably don't see stuff overnight, but we promise to continue giving you the best service, and hopefully I will have your trust and vote for me the second time. Southbridge is beautiful, we can do it. We're all strong, we all, we need Southbridge. Kids, elderly, people, we're all for Southbridge. Please don't forget to vote on June 13th for me, and vote yes on number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph, too. And if we could just give a collective, a round of applause for the people that are still here tonight. And I have to tell you, you know, I've done a number of these debates. I think you guys have it all down. I mean, everybody seemed to, you know, I have the same problem that Kevin Buckston mentioned a little bit earlier. We've got three candidates we're supposed to be voting for out of eight, and I feel the same way, Kevin. I think I could vote for any of the candidates up here, so I have an idea, actually. Nine members of the council, if you include me with it, I'll be chairman. We'll just, all just show up next Monday.
I'd like to suggest going back to 12 on the council, because I think there's more than enough work for 12 people on the city.
And more than enough interest, interest for sure, but I mean, if we just, if we just show up Monday and say we're the new council, I don't, I don't know, me, I don't think the town would do, I think the town would do better. I really would. I think you've done a great job. Thank you very much. Thank you, Maureen Doyle. You've been clicking away and just punching buttons all night long. And you kept things, and you kept things moving, and really, everybody saw that. They were very well aware of what you were doing there, and Gus, Steve, as always, for being here to report for the newspaper and for helping out with these questions as well. And we don't have a massive crowd here tonight, but it is actually not a bad crowd considering the Boston Celtics are playing. Please, nobody tell me what the score was, or who won, or anything. I want to get home. I got that thing on tape, and that's how I'm going to spend my night. My name's Rich Merrill. I do charity auctions and that kind of thing. I'm kind of retired, I've been in the town for 40 years. These people did great. You did great by watching, and hopefully you'll show up on the second Tuesday in June, the 13th. Show up. Let's beat that 9% that we did last year. That was incredibly bad. 91% of the people could show up, and I'd still want 100%, but we certainly got to do better than 9%. On a positive note, we've got some great candidates, some great questions that they suggested we could ask for next time around. Maybe we will. And we'd like to see you again this, next year, doing the same thing. But let's get the vote out of the way on the second, on the June 13th. Let's all show up and vote, and thank you again for watching. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much. I know that a lot of you have just finished watching the councilor's forum that we had, where we've got eight people that are running for three seats. We've got eight people running for three seats. Same issue is not the case with the school committee. Right now, you'll see two people on the ballot for actually three seats. So the person you see next to me is going to win one of these seats, for sure. And her name is Carla De La Cruz de Villa. And Carla came to the forum tonight for the councilors, and we told her, if you have something to say, you have an opening statement, feel free, and we'll ask a couple of questions back and forth. But here's Carla to tell you a little bit about why she's running for the school committee here in Southbridge. Carla?
Thank you. So yes, hello, my name is Carla De La Cruz de Villa. I'm running for the Southbridge School Committee, as he mentions. I am a parent of two, and my youngest is actually on the spectrum. I'm a social worker, I care a lot for this community. Last year with my co-founder, I started the Wellstorm, Inc., and our first program is the Bridge Fridge, which is the community fridge that is open 24/7 with access to free food. I am very passionate about this town, and that is why I'm running for school committee. I want to make some changes to our school systems, doing what's right, changing things for the better, so that Southbridge can attract more, be sustainable, livable, diverse. It's about making connections with your neighbors, have equality, be inequitable, and of course, having a good educational system. I want to focus on three things. Want to make, what makes a good school, what barriers our students could be facing, and what can be done. What makes a good school? Well, a great place for education, a safe place, a place to learn, small classroom sizes, mainstream fully-included students with special education needs, rather than placing them in separate special schools or classroom, extra supports for students on IEPs, and reassuring families that their child will receive the needed services. What can be barriers for students? Poverty, receivership, language barriers, unsustainable home environments, lack of quality teachers. What can be done? Well, we need to support our students, our parents, make process easier, find resources, building those relationships. But I also turn to all of you for your help, your guidance. I want to hear from you, because you are all part of this great town, and your voices matter to me. So let's work together to make this an even greater Southbridge.
I have to ask you, and sometimes I think when you're a town councillor, it's one of the more thankless jobs. I don't think there's anything more thankless than people that run for a school committee that doesn't really have any power because of the receivership situation that we have in Southbridge. That's a great statement, it is. But is it going to be frustrating for you to get on a committee that the state won't even talk to?
No, because I have a dream team that backs me up. We all, I say, we have the same dream, and that's why I'll be voting for Jackie Ryan, Andrew Murich, and Maria Torres, because we all believe in the same things, and we're going to collaborate and work together to make Southbridge that much better, especially in the educational systems.
I hope it works out for you, and I hope the receivership changes to the point where they actually look at you and the other people that are on the committee. There's three empty seats on the committee. We have now two candidates, because the third candidate just pulled out this afternoon. And I don't know, I can blame that person, and I wouldn't blame anybody if they pulled out and said they didn't want to run, but I'd be sad if they did, and I'd certainly be sad if you did. That was a great statement, that was a good answer to that question. Is there anybody that you know down at the State House that can work on that whole receivership?
We'll see. Yeah. That's the point. It's getting our legislators involved, it's being a team, working together, so we can make changes around here. And I'm a parent, like I mentioned earlier, and I want my kids going to school here. Right now, they don't. So until I feel comfortable enough for my kids to come here, I want the community to feel the same way I do, and bring us together so we can make things happen.
Look, you have the people's vote here, I'm sure. You're going to have a lot of votes. Even if you just get one vote, you're in. But I'll tell you, it would be nice. It would be nice if you got more than one vote. Carla De La Cruz de Villa. Look for that long name on the ballot and put a check mark next to it. Show up when we have the election coming up, the second Tuesday in June. Be there, and be one of the people that are going to be counted. We're all counting on you, we're counting on you as well. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you.